Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting and I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'll ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, we would request that item number five be added, which will be consideration of purchase of equipment for public works.
Okay. Anything else? Did you want to move that?
Oh, yeah, and then move the executive session to the very end.
Okay. That makes sense, council? All right, then that'll move us on to the public forum portion. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, now's the time to come forward. Give your name and your podium and the reason you're here. Give your name at the podium, I should say.
Ron Dick, resident 420 Santa Fe Street. I was just kind of curious if there's a place where you can view the minutes of the work sessions online? That's the only thing I've got.
Yes, there is. We do publish those on there. If you go on our website, hallsteadks.gov, and you go to the document center, there's an entire section of minutes and they'll be in there. Minutes are not written verbatim, though, for, I mean, it's very vague of this is what was discussed. It doesn't go into details like during a full meeting because no action can be taken. But they're there.
Thank you.
If you need help, just let me know.
All right, anybody else? All right, I will close the public forum and go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reading through the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council agenda, or sorry. Wrong one. Or the consent agenda, yeah. No, that's it, approved. I am so sorry. Been up too long. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for August 25th as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, the consent agenda stands as approved. There are no public hearings tonight. So we'll move on to unfinished business and the first item is a distressed property at 217 Main. The one party that wanted to look at the building is interested in it. So I don't know if we need to take any other action other than maybe continue this to the next meeting.
Yeah, we would ask for continuation, speaking with them. They thought they could kind of get their proposal and their thoughts in order by September 22nd, which will be our second meeting in September, so we would recommend that you guys postpone.
He did actually talk to you then, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to continue the distressed property hearing for 217 Main Street till September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds to continue the distressed property hearing at 217 Main to the September 22nd. Meeting all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. That'll be at that meeting. Okay, let's move on to new business and the first item is setting the 2026 budget public hearing time and date. What did you have in mind for that, Ethan?
As has been our standard practice for many years, it's setting the budget public hearing the same night as the revenue neutral rate hearing, which would be September 8th. So our first meeting in September at 7:00 PM. And then you had in your packet a copy of the budget summary and the notice that would be published in the paper setting a maximum mill levy for the city of Hallstead combined of 79.238 mills.
Okay, council, I'll need a motion to set that.
There's no further discussion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed 2025 budget for the city of Hallstead on Monday, September 8th at 7:00 PM and authorize publication of required public notices for the revenue neutral rate in budget public hearing with the proposed 2026 budget summary.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to set the R and R in the 2026 budget public hearings for September 8th, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign, that motion carries. Next, it looks like we need to talk about safe routes to school phase one. What you got for us there, Ethan?
Yeah, we had KDOT advertised for construction engineering and inspection services for that project, which is slated to go to bid on October 22nd. And we had three proposals that were submitted and the review committee reviewed all of those independently of one another and then aggregated the score. We had Lochner, PEC, and Col Valley Engineering were the three who submitted proposals. Lochner had an average score of 97 out of 100, PEC had 92.75 out of 100, and Col Valley Engineering had a total of 89.5 out of 100. So we would recommend, based on the review committee report, that the city select Lochner for construction engineering and inspection services.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to select Lochner as the construction engineering design consultant for KDOT project number 40 TE-0520-01, based on the selection committee review and report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Lochner on our phase one safe routes to school program. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign, that passes. Next item, we talked about this at the work session council. It's the 100 and 200 blocks of the west side of Main Street sidewalk replacement. So do you have anything to add to that, Ethan, or?
No, just in the agenda report, kind of showed the three estimates. Again, this was not, you know, a formal engineer pre-designed project, so it was solely based on estimates. So the contractors worked up their own, so that's why there's some, you know, variation beyond there. But overall, most of them were pretty well within each other in terms of square footage. Pat can answer any questions as he interfaced with the contractors more directly. Again, this wasn't necessarily on the improvement plan list, but it has been something that was indicated by both the strategic plan and council member question since we did the east side 200 block to do. So prices are there for the various areas and it's up to your guys' discretion of what, if anything, you would like to do.
I have a question, Ethan. A patron asked me, in the 100 and 200 block of Main on the west side, why are there not more handicap parking spots? And who designates that? The property owner?
It'd be us, because it's all public parking. We, with the parking being basically in the, in the street easement, it's on-street parking. And so historically, just the city has never.
Yeah, so I just, I told him I'd look into it. And as I went down the street in both directions, I noticed the post office doesn't have handicap parking, City Hall does, the bank does, the library does. There's none on the west side of Second Street or First Street. Health Ministries does. That's it. If you're a patron in Hallstead and you're handicapped and you need to go to the grocery store or to Champs or whoever there, that's tough, particularly on a brick street. Not that I want to get rid of the brick streets, I'm just saying, that's tough if you're in a wheelchair.
Yeah, and these proposals did, I believe, even in the 100 block, right? Or just the two, okay, sorry. In just the 200 block, does put a mid ADA ramp in, like we did on the east side in the 200 block and then the 100 block. Would still have availability of the spots, I mean, per ADA regs, like on the corner and.
So you're going to curb cut coming off the street up on the, on the west side then?
Yeah, but just at the 200 block, yeah.
Isn't ADA like 10% of all available parking spots in a given, in a given area?
I don't know what the numbers are.
Don't quote me, but I want to say the last one I saw was like one out of every 25.
25%?
No, one out of every 25.
Oh, one out of every 25.
Well, if we're doing, if we decide to do the 100 and 200 block sidewalk on the west side of Main, I think we should at least put one of those curb cuts in and in each of those respective areas. So, would you agree with that, Pat?
Well, like I said, we're going to do the 200 block. The 100 block's tough because we've got that alley in the middle. So now you're talking about cutting a half a block in half again. Every time you put in a curb cut, you're taking out basically two parking stalls.
Yeah, because they can't park right in front of the ramp.
So you'd be better off putting a handicap at each end probably, if you're going to do that.
Well, and where that alley comes through there, it's graded up to the sidewalk there anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's not ADA, because it's got to be a certain slope when that's deeper than that.
If we do that block, can we make that ADA? That alley cut out, if you do the 100 block?
Probably not without getting into the street.
Well, either into the street or have to cut way back into the alley and then you'd have to come out to get back onto the sidewalk. It's.
Okay.
So I don't know that there's enough elevation change there to make it ADA. But even just cutting in, in the middle of the block, puts the actual ramp pretty close to the buildings. Not so close that it will work, but it just, it does change the angle a little bit.
Can I ask where the Costa is out of?
Yeah, it would be out of the Capital Improvement Fund.
I mean, not the cost, the company that, the, one of the companies that bid on it.
Oh, Casta?
Yeah.
He is out of?
Well, he's out of Wichita. He used to work for Bryant &amp; Bryant.
Okay.
Before they shut down, then he started his own company. We've used him in some other projects and he's done really good work. I mean, actually using it in my mom's house for a project, so.
Is that who has the winning bid?
Yeah.
He's got the lowest estimate.
I kind of looked at the.
Damn, I, I've been, went dead.
It's about 30, 30,000 difference. I just hate not having a local person not get it. 30,000's a lot, a lot of difference.
Yeah.
If it was 10,000, it'd be different, but 30,000's pretty substantial.
And you never know, Becker may have done that because he's, he got work backed up already, so you never know. But you're, 32,000 is a lot of difference.
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the estimate from Casta Construction for the repair and replacement of the west side of the 100 and 200 blocks of Main Street and adjacent parking areas and set a project budget of $150,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Casta for the sidewalk on the west side of Main in the 100 and 200 blocks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both same sign. Be nice to get that done. Next item on the agenda is the 2025 standard traffic ordinance and the uniform codes. This is kind of a housekeeping item that we always update every year. Anybody on the council have any question about these? Well, if not, let's get them approved.
The League of Kansas Municipalities says, do it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1345 and ordinance amending the code of the city of Hallstead to incorporate by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 20 and 25 edition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1345. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign, that stands as approved.
Continuing with this, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1346 and ordinance amending the code of the city of Hallstead to incorporate by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's 2025 edition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1346 for the UPOC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that passes. Now, we'll move on to an added item. This is consideration for a dump truck that Pat's got his eyeballs on, so. You want, I guess Ethan's passing out some papers now. As you all know, this is a big twin screw truck that we would most likely be using more for snow removal and dirt hauling than anything else. The truck in our current livery has seen better days, so.
Yeah, it's been very rare for us to find anything that's remotely in, in good or has not had much of its useful life, already expended when it comes to dump trucks. Just the fact we found something newer than 2015 was kind of nice. However, these six dump trucks are being auctioned by Miller County, Missouri. Auction closes this Thursday. You can see there that all the trucks between them, and you can probably tell which ones have lower mileage based on their current bidding prices. They're all between 40 to 65,000 miles. The reason they're turning over six trucks is they, they lease out these and essentially believe it's better for them to buy out the leases and flip them from a cost perspective than continuing to keep them. Maintenance that they noted included weekly greasing, blowing out filters, and then oil changes every 7,000 miles. And most importantly, which again, very rare for used equipment, is they all actually still have their MAC factory warranties through October 10th of '28. Looking at what a new dump truck would cost us, and for those of you that don't remember, on the city equipment purchase plan, we estimate a new dump truck with the spreader plow would run the city $350,000. And we originally had one slated, hopefully for next year. That being said, these are nice, we don't know that we'll be able to get them, but for, for used equipment, kind of, kind of a rare find. So we're hoping that to hopefully be authorized to bid on those. You have kind of our max there. If we go much over that, we feel we're getting close enough to what a new one would cost. It wouldn't make sense, but, and I will note, that cost does not include the plow and spreader, which would have to obviously still go after. But we still think that we'd save anywhere from 50 to $75,000 off the purchase of a new one, if we were able to be successful, so.
Be rare to see them like that.
Yeah, it is. Does that, if we would buy new at 350, would that include the plow and spreader? Or would we have to be, buy that in addition?
That should include the plow and.
That would, okay.
My question, as you say, primarily snow removal. However, when we had snow, it seemed like we didn't either have the manpower or something to then remove said snow, so.
We only had one truck, I think that made a pretty significant difference on that, I think.
I mean, that's fine, I just don't want to then hear people complain that the, that we're not removing snow. If we say we're doing this because we want to provide a service to the community and then when it snows 10 inches, then we hear people that can't get out of their dri- like, I don't know, it feels like a, I just want to make sure that then it's being.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't plow individual streets. We plow the snow routes first, especially with 10 inches of snow. And it takes a hot minute to plow 10 inches. And if I remember right, we had a couple of storms that by the time you'd think you were done, you'd have to start back all over again, because it was snowing.
Yeah, and it was something that we talked about discussing because, I mean, I don't know. I just think if we just bought a truck that was supposedly had some kind of a plow thing on it last year, I think, and then.
Smaller truck, but we had two, two big dump trucks at one time, didn't we, Pat?
Yeah.
And then if we say that, well, we're not gonna do, you know, we're only doing XYZ streets, well, is that, is that because we can't? Is that because it's never happened? Is that like, and then we said we were going to look at, at what the options, I'm just trying to say, like, if we're gonna.
Having been a city guy at one time, it's hard to do the side streets because you got everybody's vehicles parked along the side street.
And we did talk about the concerns and the liabilities of the street, yes, I remember.
You set yourself up a little bit there if you cause harm or hit one of those or. The, the other thing that you give when you do a side street is you're only doing the center of the streets, basically. So you push all that snow into somebody's driveway and then you have that issue. So there's a little bit of catch on all of that, that we kind of have to look into.
Well, then I guess the, all, my, my follow-up would be then, is there a need for it?
Yeah, I mean, we've always had two dump trucks here and.
We only have one now, correct?
Right, yeah, and, and think about how much street limbs and stuff we haul off after storm damage. It gets used a lot for that, too. What, what are the primary uses, Pat?
Well, I mean, it's, we move material for roads, new trees, trash cleanup, tree cleaning, cleanups. It's, it's got the uses, now whether we actually put the plow and spreader on it, that's a choice we can make. We still kind of need the truck. I would like to put a spreader on it, mostly for redundancy. Because this other one is getting older and this, when we were doing, we were having to do some work on it to get it to run and spread. It would work fine, one day, the next day it didn't want to do anything, we had to go in and work on it. So partially redundancy to have the second truck on that. Now, we do, because we did buy the 550, that's the last truck we got, we got us, we did get a plow on that, so that helps. And then we actually did, we had the plow that we got mounted to the other 350 that we just bought a couple of years ago. So now that gives us technically three trucks with plows. So we really wouldn't have to put a plow on this one. But again, they're for redundancy. And also, it may be that that Sterling that we have right now, the big one, doesn't keep running for us. It does have some engine problems that they wanted over $15,000 to do repair work on and we just decided not to spend it on it at this point.
But this would become your primary dump truck?
Yeah.
Then your starting would be the backup?
Yeah.
Well, I like it because they're new enough and it's a lot less than what a brand new one costs.
And warranty.
And it's, yeah, they still got two years' warranty on them. These are 2024 MAC trucks that we're looking at, by the way.
And we're only looking at one.
Right.
Yeah, we're not trying to buy all six.
Bidding across six of them. But we're only hoping to win one of them.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve up to 200,000, including premium, and look into the cost of the plow and spreaders to go on.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve bidding up to $200,000 on one of these trucks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries. Good luck, Pat or Ethan, whoever's doing the bidding on that.
That's not a perfect way, but.
Well, we're going to move that executive session to the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to the report section now. We'll start with governing body comments. I'll start with you, Denise.
I've got nothing other than school starters, so be careful and be mindful of the kids, kiddos walking to school and, and watch Charlie as he's out there telling you to stop so the kids can cross in the crosswalk.
Yeah, our volleyball teams kick off tomorrow with their jamboree and Big Blue Night Thursday, and our football team on Fridays has a jamboree and CKL volleyball in Heston on Saturday. So lots of events to get out and support your community if you have the opportunity. And best of luck to the dragons out there competing.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll pass.
Jim?
I got nothing this evening that already hadn't been said, so.
All righty, well, we'll move on to Ethan for a city manager report.
Not much to report this evening, just been wrapping up and working on the budget. And there are things we are, were awarded a mural grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce. So I just want to congratulate City Clerk Waite on her efforts on that grant. And we will give you all more details, but the tentative location will be on the north side there of Brandon's building. So kind of exciting to have a downtown mural there. Did participate in the policy committee review for the League of Kansas Municipalities to help update their statement of municipality in Derby. And that was pretty productive in learning where they think the legislature's going this year. And other than that, we're also looking into another grant opportunity potentially for playground equipment. And I will keep you all apprised as we get more information on that.
I like grants.
Yes. Where did the playground equipment go? Or is that too early to say?
Most likely scout park.
Okay.
All right, we will entertain that motion for that executive session now.
All right, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session for pending contract negotiations, consulting with the city attorney on matters that would deem privileged and the attorney-client relationship exemption, KSA 75-4319B2, to include the city manager, the city attorney, to reconvene at 7:45.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we are in executive session. Those same sign, we are in executive session. Those same sign, we are in executive session. Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on and that does conclude our agenda this evening and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, council.